Hello there.
All good. Okay, we're all here. Let's get underway. This is the West Newbury Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, February 20th. I have 7:02 PM. And there's at least one name I don't recognize in. There's an iPhone. I'm not sure who that is, but I'll, we'll just introduce quickly. The Chair, Brian Murphy.
Ray Cook, Planning Board Member.
Anne Bardine, Planning Board Member.
Deb Hamilton, Planning Board Member.
Tim Cronin, Planning Board Member.
Okay.
Sue Brown, Town Planner.
There you go. And we all know who we are. That's good. Okay, so we're, the first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing at 125 River Road, the Eagleness subdivision. I move, I believe I have to open this, right Sue?
Yes, that's correct.
I move to open the public hearing for the aforementioned address.
Second.
All in favor? Brian Murphy?
Ray Cook, hi.
I see everybody is in agreement.
Deb, yeah.
So I had a note from Sue mid-afternoon that the, I'll let her speak, but they want to continue to the next meeting. Maybe you can elaborate, Sue.
Certainly. When I checked in with them today, just asking what their intention was, they responded with an email that reads, "On behalf of the applicant, we would request this item be continued to the March 5th hearing date. Please let me know if any additional information for this request is needed." I told them that that would be sufficient, but I hope that, I did ask in a follow-up if he would let us know what he would be prepared with at that March 5th meeting, so.
Might I just remind everyone that in fact our meeting is moved to the 6th because of election day on the 5th?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Have to make sure that they're available then, and that they know. Thank you.
Yeah, so barring any confirmation from them, I move to continue the public hearing at 125 River Road, Eagleness subdivision, to Wednesday, March 6th.
Second.
At the same time. I heard a second.
Yep.
All in favor? Brian Murphy?
Ray Cook, hi.
Tim.
And Tim.
Okay.
5-0. And yes, it's Wednesday, and that's due to the fact that there's a state primary. Is that correct?
Yes, election.
On the 5th, and we are not allowed to have a public meeting that night.
Right.
One of those regulation things. But, okay. So the next item on our agenda is 519 Main Street, the Deer Run, also to be known as the Major Boy Drive. And there's an update, and Sue, why don't you speak to that if you would?
Sure. Mr. Crowe submitted, his engineer submitted the street interim as-built plans, as I guess was requested. So they've moved along, and I did ask for a peer review of that, which you have a copy of, primarily just asking him to add additional information onto the plan as submitted. They do, they do, he did share that he had two units close to under contract, that he expected those to close, and he expected to ask for a lot released, lot release in, in March.
Okay. So some, I guess, earlier in the month, and we probably have seen the, the note from his engineer, Williamson Sparages, and then the reply from Meridian, and it kind of appears to me that there's still some missing information out there. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say he identified a fair amount of information that needed to be included on the plan. He did do a, you know, he has been doing the site visits, and he believes everything is in place, but he wanted it on the as-built plans as well.
Could you double, well, could you check with? I'm not sure, are you in direct contact with Williamson Sparages, or is it through Meridian?
Both.
Well, we should find out if there's, if there's some issue in putting that information on the plan. I'm, I don't want Mr. Crowe to come in kind of, you know, with a pending closing or something, and seeking some relief from complying with what we've asked for many, many months ago.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that in a punitive way, but we have asked, and it hasn't happened, and he may be, you know, starting to get some pressure from people that want, you know, close on those units.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, just nice reminders and probably, you know, next week a follow-up as well, just to nudge them along. Yeah?
I have a question. Maybe this is just opening a can of worms. I hope not. These are duplex units.
Yep.
But they're on one lot, right? How does a lot release work for that? You release it, and it releases both units?
Yes.
Okay.
That was easy.
Yeah, and fortunately, and that is how it'll work also with the payment to the Affordable Housing Trust, because he'll need to submit that payment to get a certificate, you know, an occupancy certificate as well.
Okay. Anything else? People have any other comments on Major Boy Drive?
No.
Also 519 Main Street, same thing?
Yep.
No?
No? Okay. All right. Good, moving along. The next item on the agenda is the Housing Opportunities Initiative. And the first heading on that is the hearing date. That's a public hearing for the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, also known as a MICMOD. That will be on March 19th. And Sue, I think you had indicated the Select Board wished this to be a hybrid meeting.
They did, they did suggest that was, that is, they would prefer that just to make sure that there's no perception that there wasn't, it wasn't an assessable meeting. So I'm happy to, to hold down that meeting in the, in the hearing room like I did with that one other meeting. I'm sure the Select Board would probably be in attendance at that as well. So I'm happy to do that.
Do you, do you feel you would like another board member there with you?
I believe that the regulations are if the board is either there or it's all apart. And I can double-check on that. I'm, I'm comfortable doing it without.
I have some vague relation that one member needed to be there along.
Oh.
But I, I could be.
All right, let me get confirmation on that then.
Although we, to be fair, we have held one of those, and you were the only one there, I think.
Right.
On the, one of the kennel hearings.
Yes.
But let's just double-check.
Yeah, we're checking.
Yeah.
I'll be at it, but I should be able to tune in from Colorado.
Okay. Do we, do we need to kind of earmark a time on this? I mean, I'm thinking we should probably try and do this first, especially also if we have another continuance or, you know, there'll certainly be another hearing on the River Road subdivision, but we could put them after it. I think we should go first.
Yeah, and would you want to do, it'll be for both the amendments for the definitions and for the MICMOD, so would you want to hold the definitions portion first, or?
That shouldn't take that long, should it?
I wouldn't think.
Sure, yeah. Unless someone else has another opinion about that. No?
No.
So we'll firm it up, but that, that I think sounds fair and reasonable to me. All right. So our topic, frequently asked questions, and I think we're close to where we are able to at least put this list out. Maybe you want to share this and go over this again?
Sure. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
A little bit bigger would be greatly appreciated. Getting my new glasses tomorrow.
And I learned something. I believe that you can make it bigger on your end as well.
Yes.
The same way that I can.
Okay, I hadn't tried that.
Yeah, I didn't. I just learned that at a recent webinar when I was having trouble seeing the screen.
How do we do that?
Yeah, I don't know how to do that.
I might consider using two fingers and make it bigger.
Oh, interesting. I think it's just the same way the control, the control and scroll.
Fingers works too.
Oh yeah, control, yep.
Does that work for y'all?
Does, thank you.
I mean, I hope that it's large enough so that anyone can see it, but if you.
Yeah, I can't move it, but I can see down through why did the state pass this law? Is that all? Everybody can see?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So it's just kind of, we'll say, if anybody has a question or comment.
Or any corrections.
And again, I spoke briefly with Sue today. I mean, we can put this out there and over the next week or two, or even at the, from the public hearing, add as things may come up.
You know, this was, this was on public radio recently. I forget the name of the community.
Milton's making a big mess.
Oh, yeah.
They voted it down.
Well, they voted in, in their town meeting last December, I think it was, and then they, a group exercised their right to run a referendum, and the referendum failed, so. Flags are really off.
I think the new portion that we added, that you maybe, that we hadn't discussed in a public meeting, is kind of the last, is it likely that all 87 units would be built? Which is kind of wordy, but it's kind of necessary, and I, and I gave you, we could do all those words, or we could keep it more simple with the second one, and I'm happy to have your, you make that call.
Well, I would like to see something, even a sentence. I mean, I think people are going to still focus on 90 bedrooms and think that that's 90 units. That we, we make some guesstimate that it will likely be in the 30 to 40 unit. Or, or up to a maximum of some 40 units. Anybody think we should do something like that, or?
Yeah.
I might italicize the word bedrooms. Would that just make it worse?
No.
I think that's better. 30 to 40, they're likely.
Yeah, I actually, I would take out the word likely.
Yeah, and you might say housing units.
Yeah, maybe that's, you don't need that, you don't need italics if you've clarified.
Yeah, I, I just think, yeah, that, that helps the.
I think you mean parentheses.
No, I meant, I had suggested italics. I withdraw my suggestion.
Okay. It was a good one.
I, I like the first paragraph that you've been working on here. I would delete though the last sentence.
Which one?
The MICMOD district has maximum capacity of 134 units.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was Dylan's suggestion, I do believe. I looked back at his stuff today.
It's just confusing.
It is confusing. I just didn't want to be.
Yeah.
No?
And then I would just eliminate your, your alternate language there.
Yeah, I think this is, this is good. Thank you.
I think in this case, more specific data is our friend.
Yes.
Do need to pull that.
I do, yeah. How did that get over me?
Did we define MICMOD anywhere before? It's referred to there? Again, I just, people need to know what, what that stands for.
It's at the very beginning, isn't it?
Where did I see that? I thought, I thought we put that in, but.
Let's check.
Maybe we put it in something else.
There it is.
Where? Oh, right here.
It's proposed.
Multi-family, yeah.
MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Okay, thank you.
I don't know why I put the question in there.
So this does bring the elephant right into the room. Clarify when decided. When, when are we? L T B D, huh?
Shouldn't there be a question mark after the, outside the parentheses?
Well, there, maybe that's what it was supposed to be. Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah.
There you go.
How about in the, right under, is it likely that all 87 units would be built? People think about saying any proposed development would face. Again, this is all, it's really kind of hypothetical.
Yeah, yeah. Would is better.
Yes, would.
Or might.
No.
No, they will always face them, but it's a question of whether or not there will be any development.
Oh.
I'm, I'm way down at the bottom there. First bullet item, how was the proposed bylaw developed? There should be a comma after a design and planning firm.
Thank you.
I'm glad you put in all of the public meetings we've already held.
Yeah.
To forget all that. Look at that.
Yeah, because people get all upset and saying, "You're just springing this on us."
Yeah.
And it's like, oh no.
It is the, yeah.
You can add today's meeting. As you're about to.
I believe we were also disgusted on, in February, what was the?
Yeah, the six.
First on the six.
Six.
Yeah, I would say so. Easy enough to find out.
2024.
Today's the 20.
Oh.
We could probably even add, in each meeting until.
Right.
Well, I know, but.
But, I know, I know.
Accurate. As of today.
We've, yes. Okay, how was the district's?
Just had a question about that last sentence on that page. Let's see, oh, okay, it continues on the next page. Show positive attributes.
They'd probably put some sort of a heading at the top there, so. You know, attribute, you know, on, on the second page.
Oh, okay.
I, I do some sort of a
Yep.
Continued, some whatever, yeah, is appropriate. Well, you can fix that, whatever. Or add.
I will.
Close parentheses at the end of that sentence, if you would. Or says others.
Thank you.
Can I suggest something about the dates? Sorry to go back up.
Sure.
We say, presentations and discussion at planning board meetings in 2023 and 2024.
Yeah, do that.
Be kind of confusing about why we're hearing about more than one of this and that date.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, that's good.
That was, me too.
Okay, now.
I think that reads fine. I mean, it, it just goes from one page to the next.
And I can put it all on one if you prefer.
Want to make the page break above that?
Yeah, I could certainly do that.
Yeah. There we go.
Something weird happened to your font there on those two bullets.
Yeah.
Well, look at that. Oh, it's the same here.
Yeah, it's probably because you're underheading something.
Yeah.
Well, we can check that off.
No, it says, for the, no, you said the three sites. It says list.
You're going to list.
We're going to list them, or?
Oh. So.
Or is that C?
We're, after further value of three sites, right here?
Yes.
The board determined to.
But it says that.
Take the word, take the word three out of it. After further evaluation of sites.
Yeah, and take the word list out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if, what that meant.
Good, I got you.
I think what it meant was the three that were.
We're going to list.
Yeah, were including the Mullen property.
Ah, ah, okay.
So you referred to the three sites in that sentence right above. I don't know if you want to mention what the three sites were. Does it matter?
Well, that's what we're discussing.
Right.
After further evaluation of sites, the boards, the board
Focus.
Came to the conclusion that two sites were practical.
Concluded.
Concluded, yeah.
That two.
Concluded that two sites were practical, or would, would work, or would be appropriate, would be appropriate.
Yep.
And I also suggest that these two paragraphs that are further indented, if you will, with the hollow, the empty circle, aren't really sub to anything. I think these are really three equally weighted points, I think.
Okay.
One, two, three. I don't know if anybody else cares, but.
No, I, I agree. I think that.
Yeah.
We should have a process. You know, these are steps in the same process, I'd say.
She's so good at moving stuff, too.
No, I just.
Just like to see that.
Watch her work. It's so technical.
I think we know what the Mullen property is, but do you want to just put the address there or something?
I would accept the address is zero Main Street.
Zero Main Street, yeah.
I don't think that would help people.
On that line, town-owned should be hyphenated.
Yes.
Where is, is it on this?
Third line down.
Second bullet.
Second bullet.
Third line.
Down on the guy. Thank you.
And the same thing with head-to-head below, which you can probably right-click and it'll offer it to you.
Sure will.
So let's see, Mullen address. It would be good to somehow identify it.
I would say that, yeah, okay.
I would just say on the, what side is that? Like the north side of?
Yeah, side of Main Street. That's, that covers a lot of ground, though. Let's see.
Can you say opposite daily drive? Which pretty much.
There you go. Yep.
As a suggestion.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, that's helpful.
At least in that area, anyway.
Yeah.
Good.
I thought, and the last bullet, I thought we sort of arrived at 317 Main Street, and I'm just misremembering?
Well, there has not been a.
We haven't decided.
Decided.
Conclusion.
I'm back up in the second paragraph. I think we've got some confusing parentheses. Oh, that, okay, that's all about why it isn't
Right.
town-owned.
And doesn't have a street address.
No, 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 that, that's one thing, and then it's also town-owned. Should we, should, does that warrant two sentences, or are we just trying to get through that? Yeah, maybe it's fine. Identified as.
You know what I would do? I would say.
Short of significant, it seems run-on-ish.
Yeah, here's how, here's, here's my suggestion. Is that the state is town-owned and, and then eliminate the opening parentheses. And identified as non-developable by the state.
Period.
Period, yeah. Or, or without significant legal actions?
Significant action. I don't know, it's, it's not really a short explanation.
It isn't.
Could just say the state, the state criteria, whatever that office is called now, right?
Yeah, we could also say identified as such and such offices as. It's not that it's not developable. That's going to give people the wrong impression.
Yeah.
That's true.
Not developable under this, under MBTA criteria.
Yeah, right, the DHCD criteria, yep.
We, I could say non-compliant.
Non-compliant with the MICMOD restrictions?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
MICMOD regulation. Well, it's, MICMOD's what we're doing. It's MBTA communities that are this, that's the state's, shall we say, stick.
Non-compliant as a MICMOD?
Well, I, I think it's just under the MBTA Communities Act.
Under the MBTA Communities Act.
Okay.
With the MBTA criteria, non-compliant.
I think it's the criteria. It's not really the act so much. It's the criteria that the DHCD developed.
Okay.
Forgot a T in regulations there.
I still like criteria better.
Yeah, it's not the regulations, Sue. I don't think it's regula, I think it's just the criti, I think it's the DHCD criteria.
Okay.
That, that if it's town-owned, it.
Right.
Be, something has to be going already, right?
Has to be actively being sold.
Or sold or developed.
Right.
I like this, under the MBTA Communities criteria. Sounds good.
Yep, I think that's. If someone really wants to get into it, we can.
Elaborate.
Write their phone numbers. They can explain themselves.
You know, and the last sentence there too. To simplify things.
Take out that 40R stuff.
I would just say are limited to a maximum of 20% affordable housing.
Yeah, but not under this.
No, no, right.
Right.
I would take out that whole last clause, because that is not related to what we are talking about, which is
Well, we were.
MBTA communities, right?
Well, we were talking about the fact that the town has historically wanted a significant proportion to be affordable.
But.
Okay, yes, maybe just.
But MBTA.
Limits us to 10%, and, and that's what we're talking about, why we selected the district. Because it didn't help us enough, among other things. It didn't help us.
Yeah, so limited, limited to 10%.
Yeah. I, I'd like to just go back to what historically wanted. How about historically desired?
Well, there's some nuance there I'm missing, Brian.
What's that? What, I'm just saying the word wanted.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Ever since you were in trouble with the law, you got a problem with that word wanted.
Yes, wanted. There you go. Get her alive.
No, no.
I thought, I thought that bounty hunter was off your back, Brian.
There you go, right.
So 3A, are people going to know what that?
No, I don't remember what 3A is.
No, they're not.
Under 3A.
You just have it, go back.
I don't see any 3A anywhere.
Is that not, is that not under there?
I don't know. Tell me what 3A is, and maybe I'll know.
You could say, but.
3A is the, is the MBTA Communities Act.
You, you, you could say
Let's see.
But MICMOD districts are limited to a maximum of 10%.
That sounds good, yep.
Yes, yeah, MICMOD districts.
Instead of zoning districts under 3A.
Yeah.
Okay.
MIC, I, I think Ray's a little bit better. MICMOD districts. We don't have anything about 3A, because we're only talking about. We don't have anything about three A because we're only talking about. Right?
It wouldn't be MICMod districts.
It would read is to be built on the Mullen property comma. But MICMod districts are limited to ten percent affordability.
Or districts under the MBTA Communities Act, whatever you want to call it. I mean, MICMod is.
It's a mouthful. People look at that, they'll just, their eyes are gonna, oh, yeah, I, I, I know.
That, I think that's pretty succinct.
Or I could just say multifamily.
Fine with it.
MBTA Communities, multifamily districts. Because MICMod actually is district that.
Or you could just say. But these districts are limited to ten percent. I mean, everybody knows what we're talking about, right?
Yes, well, or MBTA districts.
How about this?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
That's good.
Clearer, yes.
Yes, it is.
Good.
Um, and I think we should attach names to the two sites.
Sure.
One thirty seven and three seventeen.
Good idea.
Like the parentheses.
Okay, and should I do that way back here when we're first talking about them as well?
Good idea, yep. Like at the top, you talked about them. Sue, I think if you go up to that prior page.
So this was, I thi, is it this one?
No.
I thought you had one on the first page there. There it is, yep.
Where?
One, one forty seven, three seventeen.
Very top of the screen.
Okay.
The other time you said it was one thirty seven. Is it one thirty seven or one forty seven?
Oh, I think it's one thirty seven. Oh, now I, I get it. I'm gonna have to check.
I'll look it, I'll look it up.
Do we want to identify those as nap?
Right, yes, yep.
Yes.
So one thirty seven Main Street nap. It's funny because since neither of those businesses is running. You arrived in town in the last couple of years, you might not know what the words nap and.
Be aware.
If I at all, I guess it's still up at nap, but.
Right, you still get the sign up, yeah.
They write nap greenhouse or seventeen?
Well, the sign's still there, Dunn is a little.
Oops.
Well, naps, doesn't nap say noonan or did they ever change it?
Oh, they never changed it.
It's always been naps, yeah, never changed.
They were, their heart wasn't in it, let's face it. Now, one, you've got the word before Main Street and the other.
Yeah, I'm moving it. Oops.
Yeah. And then let's use, just use nap and Dunn later, don't you think?
Instead of the, sure.
Especially because the numbers are so similar.
Right.
I, I don't see one thirty seven.
No, I think it was one forty seven.
I think it's one forty seven?
Um.
I don't see one forty seven, I.
He, uh.
I've got there.
Was Leah Butter's name? He corrected it when we were on our last meeting, the owners.
I'm, I'm checking now.
I can, yeah, I can look at right here on mapping. I should know this. I, I think just because they have such similar numbers, I.
It's Carl Mosley. He set us straight, but I forget what it was.
Okay, so what are we thinking? One thirty seven is one of them?
It's one eighty seven.
Here he is, thank you.
One eighty seven, we were way off. It is one eighty seven.
And who said?
One eighty seven is correct.
Whose voice was that?
I think it's the same person who told us before. It's embarrassing that we don't remember.
I know, that is.
Thank you.
We just know it by naps and, and then Dunn.
Right.
Good thing we're not delivering the mail.
Yeah, we got it now.
Check and make sure that I don't have it somewhere else. One eighty seven. Thank you.
And, and who owns it now? Is it somebody in the nap family?
Yes.
Alone by the same owners.
Yes.
The Marshall family.
Oh, so Marshall, not now.
That's right.
It was the nap greenhouses. I don't know why.
Right. Business name when they acquired it, I think, but. I won't speculate.
Yeah, there we go, one eighty seven Main Street. I'll buy that.
Okay, so the last paragraph, we still have some question marks.
Yeah. David and Judith Marshall.
So I assume you'll, you'll revisit all this formatting, but now that everything's.
Absolutely, yeah.
Not much, much of a top margin on this page.
Yeah, the Marshals have had it since nineteen seventy four.
Yeah.
For twelve thousand dollars.
It was a different world, Deb.
Actually nineteen sixty five.
Thank you.
Well, the last, the last sale is recorded here as being in nineteen seventy four.
Yeah.
That was my house, though. That was, that was misrecorded. That's one seventy five Main.
Oh.
Yeah, no.
Who are you? This is Carl.
Carl Mos.
Since, since we still have not voted and, and I'm thinking I'd rather wait for the next meeting, but I would like to get this done. I would take out the last sentence. We're not gonna put in a site.
That's right. Let's just take this out for now. Who knows after the public hearing where we'll end up?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to hold this off as long as, and well. I, I have another comment on this, but I'll, let's finish up with this.
So do you want to say here the board is currently evaluating?
Yes, well, yeah, yeah. I don't want to leave with the, look, we'll either keep both or we'll pick one, but we are evaluating. I think that's a fair statement.
Yes.
This, this. In, in my view, is a work in progress and, you know, we'll tweak as we may need it, but I think it's important to get something posted on our site about this.
Yes, well, and also that we're still looking for public input. I, I think that that's.
Yes.
That's a compelling reason for getting this out there.
Yeah, and, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but. Press.
Now, this is great. This will unleash some phone calls to Sue, I suspect.
I told Sue, you know, I, oh, by the way, I, I, I have taken my papers out. I'm gonna try and be around for another few years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
But, um, and I, I, I hit my neighborhood hard last week, uh, where the weather was more conducive and got lots of signatures.
Yeah, but I, I put you over, it was me that put you over the top.
Ray, I grabbed, I tackled him as he was leaving town offices. But I was pleasantly surprised.
Doesn't show.
I, I was surprised. Um, a number of folks asked questions about this. So somehow they're, you know, whether they read about stuff in the globe or. Some, I'm, I'm not sure how, but, but. There, there wasn't a total ignorance of, of this. Uh, so I think that's, that's a good sign.
They, they weren't questioning you about term limits, huh?
Uh, no, no, well, I, I had a few, I, like, are you really doing? What are you, what are you thinking? I've had a few of those, but. Most of those people are, uh, I mean, they, they, they've known me forever, so it's more of a just thing.
Yes.
I did want to say that the, uh. There was an article in the, in the Daily News. Um, by a different reporter about the, uh. Um, Affordable Housing Trust's participation at the recent seminar we had. Um, and I can't remember her name, but Sue, maybe you could try to dig up that name. I think we should reach out to that person. Um, I, I was disappointed that that person didn't cover any other topics from the, the meeting, but. It was a nice article about the Affordable Trust and things that were being contemplated, um. Uh, by that group. Uh, I think Wendy was quoted a couple of times and whatnot. So, and, and I'll, I'll be happy to actually reach out to her, Sue, if you'd like, but I, I, the paper's gone now. And again, I don't know who in town get, I share it with my neighbor, uh, so. Uh, but it's the first time I've seen somebody since Gentsolis, uh, kind of sailed on.
Yeah, they did send somebody to that meeting, apparently. I wasn't aware of it at the time.
Yeah, we, we could do something and I'd be happy to talk to that person about this. And having the FAQs would be a, a. A great start for perhaps a recent article. I mean, there, there weren't articles about stuff in Peabody and Salem. Who the hell cares about that? But. Anyway, don't get me going.
Brian did suggest that it was, that we send it out in a blast. When we send out a, a blast about the hearing that we could attach this as a, the FAQ as a. Um, as an attachment to that. So I'm happy to, to do that.
Yeah, those, we have a, a, you know, read more kind of a prompt on them.
I, I had at least two people say, oh, I, I, I get information on the. Email from, from the town and, uh, you know, how, how are you doing on this stuff or, or what, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Emails from the town are great.
It's a small sample, but. Yeah, it left me feeling that, okay, there's a few people paying attention. Okay, so are we, we're all set on that, Sue? I think.
I believe we are.
Board members, okay. The next item is a, uh, the district comparison. I didn't have anything else to add to what we had already done, but others may want to take a look at that.
Did anyone want to take another look at that?
Yeah, we should look at it.
Can you see it okay?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a. Strengths and challenges of the location.
What are we calling this?
Um, I just call it a comparison. Matrix.
You know, if you're doing proximity to the high school, I mean, I think it's only fair to, to include proximity to the churches.
Well.
Which for, uh, three seventeen.
Kind of flips them.
Would that be similar to, should I add it to?
Wait, do we have the addresses wrong at the top?
I got it right.
Yeah.
At the top, this one.
Surprise, Sue, don't surprise.
No, at the top of the columns, yeah, it says three seventeen Main.
Those are correct.
No, that's right, I think. It was the one thirty seven that was, that was not right. It was one eighty seven.
Do we really think that the proximity of the churches is a criteria we should be evaluating?
I could also add it.
Well, you can just add it there. Retail, churches, post office and churches, they're all in it.
I, I, I think that's, that's, yeah.
I don't think it needs a whole.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Let's face it, the main one is pizza, so.
Yeah.
They're back open. I saw the open.
Oh, are they good? That's good. I was, I, I was really impressed by how the town stepped up to help out.
Yeah. I, I, I didn't, I wasn't, I was at the post office, but I, I, I guess George must be back or, or they got somebody else in there. I don't know.
What's the, uh, the, uh, pedestrian access slash amenities? Topography makes the access more challenging? Did we really?
So pedestrian access onto the site, um, and through the site, I think is what we were talking about.
Well, that was a comment that was brought up, uh, in the discussion, an in-depth discussion of Dunn. Uh, where it was pointed out that because it's the development way up on top of the hill, that that would be. You know, a less, um, easy walk perhaps down to Main Street. I don't know how much I.
Yeah, but the buildings would be down at the lower level.
No. And Dunn, everything's up top. Everything's up.
Or at least in the, in that concept, wouldn't necessarily be.
Yeah.
But I think if you're thinking about throughout the site, pedestrian access throughout the site.
Well, once you're up on the site, I, I don't think it's going to be very hilly. I mean, that doesn't make sense. I'm not sure.
Getting to it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much I feel like that's. I don't know how big a deal I think that is.
I would just delete that line. That, that's just, that's just what I think. Cause I mean, you still have potential for sidewalk connection and access too, so. Right?
Is that? Is everyone good with that?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, we've got to decide how we're spelling site here.
Yeah, sightline is.
No, that's, that is not.
I think that's.
Well, actually, this is correct, but then we.
The other one is.
Here is not.
Yes.
I'm a landscape architect. Site is always S I T E by default. There we go.
The same with, uh, the green one.
Oh, yep, thank you.
So I don't understand, let's see, the one on the left is Dunn.
Yes.
Due to. Due to long, straight stretch of road when, when traveling east to west. I mean, the stretch of the road is the same length and straightness whether, whichever direction you're traveling now. Uh, that confuses me.
Yeah, I think the volume is. Well.
I don't know.
I think that it was a sightline issue. I don't think it was a, a speed issue.
I mean, I think you can get up a good. Head of, you can get some good speed going down by nap too, because there's nothing that, you know. Uh, it's all Main Street. I, I don't know. At least around Dunn, you're sort of slowing down for Maple Street and you're slowing down for the food mart and you're.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You know, it seems a little bit.
And because people are parking along Main Street there. I, I tend to slow down because there's a bunch of people parked on Main Street and I'm worried about the door flying open in front of me.
Yeah, it's usually one and a half lanes when I'm going down there.
Yeah.
The insurance office, they're always parked along there. I don't know.
I think there's more volume at the Dunn site than there is at the, uh, nap.
Because of Bridge Street, because of.
Maple and Bridge and.
Bridge.
A church street, I'm sorry.
Church. Yeah.
We've got church and maple that are feeders and, and people turning.
Yes.
Entering, et cetera. There's definitely more volume there.
Well, I, I, I would break it down then into two different light. Yeah, volume expected to be greater. Volume of traffic expect to be higher. Um, but then I would say that the speed of traffic should be slower.
Well, would have to be measured, really. See, this is a tricky one because we, we focused on Main Street because it is, you know.
Yeah.
A road and it's got water and all those things, and yet it comes with this too, so. Hmm.
I, I wouldn't even go into the details there. I'd just say bomb expected to be higher and I would say speed expect, and, and then green, speed expected to be. Lower, somewhat lower. And by saying expected, we're, we're not claiming that we know it is.
Yeah, I think you have to slow down there because there's so much going on in the area.
And then on the other, yeah, I'd say the, your exact opposite.
Volume is less.
Volume is less, speed may be higher. And again, I, I would on the left as a volume of traffic expected to be less than. I hesitate to say anything definitive.
I'm not sure you even need to say of traffic because it's already the heading of the column.
And I would say just to be less. Bomb or traffic expected to be less. Yeah, simple.
All subject to study, of course.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know if you want to say somewhat to make it truly equivalent. But doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think the next, the next thing is fine. Sight that has a history of traffic, I think that's fine.
Yeah, it's actually kind of a good point. Intersections. Yeah, because there are a lot of accidents at that Church Street intersection.
And, and I'm not, I don't live at this end of town, so the whole thing with Harrison and Pleasant, that's not an issue.
Well, that's what I brought up, Ray. I think it is kind of an issue, but you know, what was explained was that the egress, you know, and entrance would be at a different location, so it wouldn't be opposite one of those streets, but it is kind of an issue.
Right now, it's sort of opposite Harrison.
Well, it should be opposite. It should be.
Should be opposite.
The other street.
Spelled wrong.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, and Pleasant does, is not impact the property at all.
I don't think, I think you're right. If the entrance is on the other end, Brian, yes.
And Pleasant's one way, anyway. So it's automatically.
I mean, Harrison.
Harrison's one way.
It's not one way.
It's not one way, and yeah, that's not accurate. You just have to take a right turn at the end of it.
Oh, is that right?
But it is, okay, right. But it does have limited, it doesn't discharge onto Main Street in the same. Both Harrison and, what is it?
Most people take Pleasant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, okay, you can only take a right turn at Pleasant, at Harrison.
When you come out, so you're not, so you don't add to the burden going toward.
So Brian, you're saying that's where the street would be opposite that.
That's, I think we've looked at it, yes.
The other one, it'd be opposite the east.
It can't be opposite Pleasant. Pleasant.
It's too, Pleasant's beyond the property line.
It's just, Pleasant is just barely beyond, yeah. Opposite Pleasant Street is, there's a house facing the intersection.
Either one of them really long, so.
I think you're right, Anne. That's why I think, I was thinking it would be between them, actually.
Yeah, I think it's between.
Really?
Well, that's where you've got a bit of wetland and trees.
Right, but it would be in between, for sure. Anyway, there will be traffic.
That's up to the developer, anyway.
Right.
Well, under intersections on the right, you can put in red, you can say concern regarding proximity to Harrison and Pleasant Street. Harrison Avenue and Pleasant Street. Doesn't, doesn't mean that it's going to be a deal killer or anything. It's just a concern.
Well, and you will hear from those residents if you don't list it.
Yeah. It's actually Harrison Avenue.
Oh. Thank you. And I don't think you need to say intersection. It's kind of. Maybe you do. Or, yeah, it's fine.
And by the way, this, this is, this is good because, I mean, it's showing that it's not easy.
No.
This decision and, and things are pretty balanced, pros and cons.
Yeah.
I think until you get to the the physicality of the site is.
Of site care.
This is the, like, site characteristics.
Yeah.
More challenging on one.
Yeah.
Okay, hang on, where are we?
Sorry. Willy nilly scrolling. Let me know if you want me to.
Yeah, scroll a little more, a little more.
By the way, water access, on the right, cell F-14. Water access, good. I don't know if fire should be capitalized and adequate is missing any.
Yep. In both cases.
F-14.
B as well.
Oh, yeah.
That's how I say it.
So what does water access good mean?
That's from the TATA report.
So that just means that there's, we have water access. I can just say water access.
So what does that mean? I don't understand. We have the bigger main.
Access to water, public water.
The TATA report.
You can just say.
They had water available.
All right, can we say public water available? I don't know, access to public water supply?
Access is to public.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there you could, you could just, yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, then.
So I, I don't mean, I don't remember this report. So what is this distinction we're talking about? Fire flow?
So the distinction is because the NAP property is closer to the water tower, it has greater pressure at that point. The infrastructure there going, looking at the flow analysis that they did was adequate for wire suppression, water suppression, without really changing to infrastructure. They would need to change the pipes a little bit at the Dunn site because the fire flow is not quite sufficient there. It's not a GameStopper. It was just, and it was a small difference.
But the fire flow, all of our town have these compromised locations that rarely are talked about.
Right, it, yeah, it depends on the, the distance you are from the from the source.
From the pressure head, really. Distance and elevation.
So this one just would need some upgrades to, to the system, this one.
Yeah, I'm sure there are a ton of assumptions that go in there about.
Oh, absolutely. Number of units, yeah, it's all, it's all.
It was a high-level report.
Yes. It is on the site.
It's, it's on our website. We did look at it briefly. I don't know if you were around or not.
I'm happy to resend it.
Okay. That's all right. Yeah, I just, I don't remember talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was very high level.
Okay. So where were we? Other. That's just unknown.
The only thing I would say is in cell G-16, I would just say from Main Street and I would delete that on Dunn site.
I don't understand in C-16. I don't know what. I don't quite know what that means. So would it be visible or not? It wouldn't be visible. And then development at front of site.
I think the idea, if you were looking at it from the concept plans that were done, much of the development wouldn't be visible because of the topography and.
You know what I would do?
I get that, but I don't understand the development at front of site. There wasn't going to be any, was there? Isn't it all?
Well, I would just eliminate that second sentence altogether and just say much of the development.
Yeah.
Would not likely be visible or something from Main Street.
Well, Dunn was also the one where they contemplated doing a mixed residential commercial building up toward the street.
That was NAP, I think. Sort of in the spirit of the current, you know, the way the.
Right, right.
But this is Dunn.
Either, either one of them could opt for a building that's similar in character to the, to what's around it at the front of the site, you know, kind of the rambling farmhouse.
Right.
Motif, but I mean, it's all project, you know, conjecture at this point.
Yeah. So are those fair statements, then? If they end up putting something right on Main Street, then we won't have been totally honest about this.
Well, I think Dunn Zone, excuse me, I think Dunn zoning is in the commercial district and I can't remember if NAP is.
It, most of it is not.
Okay.
Just a piece of it is. So I think the statement, you know, much. Yeah, there might be something, I mean.
Okay. Right, this is mostly about topography. Let's face it, this is never. Yeah, okay.
We see the bottom too.
I'm sorry? Keep scrolling, is that what you're saying?
Scroll up a little bit, yeah.
Oh, scroll up or scroll back down?
No, just up.
I'd like to see drainage a bit more.
Am I headed in the right direction? No.
No.
Okay.
Now you are.
Perfect.
I think in the red one and D, whatever the number is there.
This one?
Do we? Could we eliminate at least one of those considerables?
Not from listening to the butter speaking.
Well, that's true, yeah.
I think there's substantial concern there.
Maybe that's, yeah, that's true. He's got the water flowing to his yard.
The water through his yard.
Yeah.
And there's a little pond on the corner of the property.
I forgot about that. Yeah. Eyewitness account, thank you.
So the placing buildings on the topography. There is a big flat area at the top, so what?
Yeah.
Do you recall what that's referring to?
Topography, the red one.
See, the red one, yeah, there it is, D.
Elevation changes.
Yeah, see where it says placing buildings?
Yeah, once you get up there, it's pretty flat, right? I don't know, maybe it's not. I haven't been up.
The plan was not to put buildings on the top of that hill.
No, I think just the topography itself is challenging for placing.
In the back, there's still a hill in the back. It's nothing like a big hill you see in the front.
Okay.
Yeah, when we went through the modeling exercise, Brian, I think there was a lot of places to put buildings up there.
Not, not, if you're looking at the parcel on the right where the hill slopes up drastically behind the greenhouse.
Yeah.
That's open. That's open space.
Right, but the other. Once you get up there. Actually, I do remember if you, if you think of the property, it was kind of like the bottom right. Wasn't there something like, maybe they would have, you could have garage under or something? Did it, did it slope off again there? Am I remembering that correctly?
Does slope off.
Yeah.
But I thought, I thought there was like a pretty considerable plateau for a street and, you know.
Yeah.
As you go, as you go further back in the parcel, that's where it flattens out. On the left side of the parcel.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, yes.
So I just don't understand why that, that would be a negative for that one compared to the other side because the other side's tighter, you know.
Do you want me to, is there any other change other than the building placement?
No, I think those other ones were, are fair.
Okay.
But what about, so what about the green topography? Do we need to, I mean, could we just say relatively level site?
We can.
I guess under soils information. That is really about drainage, which is the topic above it. We don't really have any much soils information other than from the soils maps, do we?
I think, well, the NAP property has had.
NAP has, yes, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so should we just take this one out and assume that that's?
Well, do we want to add it into drainage? I mean, it really was a drainage thing? Or? I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter.
Well, I mean, the drainage is part of the topography, so somewhere
Okay.
You should note that neighbors are concerned.
Okay, well, it could be under soils, but it's all, kind of all one topic, isn't it?
Yeah, just, we have to capture it someplace.
You're right.
So where are we going to put that?
I put it under the drainage.
There.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
No, you're good. Oops.
Yep, that's good.
I would, I would delete the first considerable there. You've got it there twice. Did we, did you just talk about that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't think we needed so much considerableness.
Considerate group.
We have concern, but we're not sure it's considerable.
Well.
There you go. That's fine.
Yeah, it does that, read better.
The spirit of.
Yep, yep.
So when we say best perk location for Dunn, we are going by soils maps.
And I think a discussion with Paul Savin in opinion.
So we have some basis for this.
It's, yeah.
There, where it says best perk location, I would say may conflict with best location for housing.
So here's, I'm just, this is really crazy. I sort of feel like the soils information category should move down a box to 23. And then all that other stuff is really about stormwater and drainage. Including what's currently in F-22.
Oh, about on the, on the NAP, yeah, that's a good point, sure.
Makes sense.
You're collecting stormwater and, yeah, it's all drainage.
So that can just scoot up there with drainage. See what I mean, Sue? The NAP, cell F-22. And move up into 21.
I can merge those.
Yes.
There's a quicker way, I should have. Are we good?
Yeah.
Nice. What else? Vegetation. Again, vegetation under NAP, we don't need to say compared to Dunn site. That's what we're doing. We're comparing.
Yep.
May need to be cut, though vegetation is not mature.
Well, I think it's.
Owners said.
I'd rather say the owners said.
All right.
Not, not us.
Okay.
Unless we have Fred go over and take a look.
Okay, I'm confused.
Under the build-out potential?
Yep.
So I just made some assumptions. Um, so I just made some assumptions. I I looked at, I took out.
Under current zoning.
Yeah.
Yes.
What we have.
Potential under current.
Okay, okay. Okay. I was thinking, I'm just so far into MBTA that I didn't even see that word current.
Sorry about the compressor kicking in, I I really hesitate to have this.
Yeah, is this needed? What does this add?
And here's why, I mean, if if we say that the maximum is twelve to fifteen units? Then we're telling the state that we know we're not.
No, no, Ray, that's under current zoning.
Zoning, that's, you're making the same mistake I did, that's why. But I'm not sure, so so what was your thinking, Sue, or whoever Dylan included this, that then?
I don't want to throw you under the bus, Tim. Tim asked me if I could, yeah. Tim asked me if I could kind of put in a comparison.
The build-up potential, yeah, but it wasn't, it was more the, under the potential zoning district, not so much, sorry.
Not for current, you want me to take this out then? Is everyone happy with that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Open a whole can of worms and people say, well, let's just do that then, we don't.
Right, well, that wouldn't make us, that wouldn't do anything for us, would it? Wouldn't, we wouldn't be on compliance.
Again, this, this one, I I I I wouldn't have this line in there.
I think, I know what you're saying, Ray, just from like the political part of it, but, you know. People are going to ask, like, you know, what practically can be, do you think could be?
Well, we we sort of got that covered in the fact. And there's no difference between.
They are saying.
There's no difference between them anyways.
So what you're really trying to do is to use this as a decision-making tool? Something that's just a matter of fact whereby we've sized the districts to give a similar result is not demonstrative of a direction, right, so, yeah.
Right.
It's gone.
Well, it was a fun exercise for me anyway, Tim. I said it was a fun exercise for me anyway.
That's why Tim loves doing it on the board.
Yeah. You could, you could see how, I understand how that could go off on a tangent, you know, people saying, oh, boy, you know, you could avoid this and that, and, yeah, we don't want to go in that direction.
Yeah. So is it true that it's still an agricultural use?
Um, it is still being haved.
It's being haved, oh.
They they grew corn on the upper hill.
Beg your pardon.
Oh, corn, I think, this summer.
Oh, okay.
I I don't know about the back area, but I did see it up on the the median hill.
Okay.
So I guess the big question is, is it demonstrative to you? Is it helpful?
Yeah, it is.
Is it a good decision-making tool?
Well, I don't know about that, but.
No, it's, it's, oh, uh, uh, sell F twenty-four? Considerable knowledge?
She's determined to get that word in there.
But I I think this is, this is helpful, and not only that, I mean, you can show this to anybody who wonders if we've considered these different issues.
Yeah.
It's good to have it on record.
Yes. Well, and I think it's good to demonstrate some of the thought process behind this, that there's not a you know, an obvious winner, and it isn't arbitrary, that's the real thing.
There you go. That's right.
So. Good, all right.
Can you circulate this back to us, Sue?
I certainly can, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So let's, I've got a couple of comments here in general on this. And Sue, you you and I can talk about this, but I'm I'm interested in and maybe we should, you you have to call Dylan. Do we have any other feedback or in terms of towns that are submitting this year? Whether they're doing more than one area?
I do.
You do?
County of Newbury, County of Newbury has proposed theirs, so you can go to their town website and see a map with their districts.
Okay. So they, they have the.
They've got a bunch of parcels that are basically right along Route One, just south of the traffic circle, you know, just over the Newbury Port Line. And then they've got another bunch way down on the other end of Route One? Including the giant office building off of the exit there.
Oh, is that right?
On the other side of the road, yep.
That actually.
Big chunks on either side of Route One.
The office thing, well, that'll, that, yeah, that that's not a, that's an interesting idea there, actually converting something like that and whatnot.
They took things that were very much on the edge of their town and very much existing commercial or adjacent to commercial property.
Although, interestingly, the one beyond, beyond the traffic circle on the right-hand side was actually evaluated as a forty-hour site, maybe close to fifteen plus years ago. So it was considered for housing, has been considered for housing for some time.
No, I'm not saying it's inappropriate, particularly given what's gone on at the train station.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely, that would definitely support it.
Chunk of it that goes all the way over on the street that I can never think of the name of, Panover Street, off to the school.
Oh, wow.
A big chunk of that neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's the only one I've seen.
Hmm, okay. Be good if we, and maybe I can. We reach out to the the guy in Bloxwood, I'm curious what the heck they're doing.
I can reach out to to neighbors and see if they're doing multiples.
It, yeah, just, I mean, if they have sewerage, it's a different deal, and it's more the septic folks, how they're looking at this.
And I'm not sure how many are far along as we are, but Newbury is, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll continue to look at that. The other option, the other option, the other item. I believe Sue was contacted by the owners of nap a parcel by their representative, John Sarkis. With a question about the district outline that has been placed on that parcel. And the comment was that it, it might impact adequate septic development and could the line be moved at this juncture? Not made bigger or whatever, but the line itself be moved in some fashion. So I I wanted to talk to the board about that.
Aren't we, when this pertain to the whole piece, or are they trying to reserve a piece?
Well, it, it's, no, it's the whole, it's the whole parcel, Deb, but how we've structured the 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 part, the part of that parcel to be developed on that land.
Okay.
He would like the lines adjusted so that right now, the area that perk dwell has supposedly houses on it, they they want to shift it a bit. That's my understanding.
Well, this could come up with any parcel in this town.
I know, and I.
Royal conditions and septic, so is there a way, is this a question for Dylan, is there a way to?
Well, I know, I didn't know Sue had heard from Dylan yet.
Yeah, that gives us any flexibility on that as a site condition?
Right, so Dylan has kind of talked about this with EO, HLC, Housing and Living Communities. And he is going back to them, and he hasn't gotten very far with them to date, but he's going back with them, he's actually meeting with them again tomorrow to discuss whether there's a way to rezone, kind of like all of the portion? And but it, but limit the development to a total of ninety units, so no more than, so he's not entirely hopeful, but he's, he's really has laid out the case of why this would allow flexibility and make a development be more likely to run into, you know, less likely to run into hurdles if they're allowed that flexibility to say anywhere on this parcel that it works best, provided that it is still fifteen units an acre, provided that it is no more than ninety acres, so we'll see what he gets for that. Otherwise, I think it's a matter of if we were given the information that the lot line should change, but the size would remain the same? Would the, would the board want to consider that before or after we bring it, you know, before bringing it to town vote, or would you know, would it just be one of those things that you would live with and try to come back with if you don't know the full story? In a timely manner?
Well, from a practical point of view, it makes sense to be able to move things around.
Especially with the septic, right, you know.
From a political point of view, it begins to to have a kind of a small B, small S, bait and switch quality about it? That you told us wasn't going to be anywhere near our houses, and now look what's happening, so I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it it is concerning, I mean, but, you know, this is, this is a lot of there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts that no one has gone down this path on before.
Yeah, and and.
I, my, that was, I think, Ray, my thought was just like yours, like, oh, jeez, how can we be seen doing this? But I I'm just bringing it to your attention, and and we have turned Dylan loose to try to clarify this. I didn't want to leave you, you know, in the dark on on what I had heard.
Yeah, I'm going to be interested. I'm going to be interested to see what he comes up with, I, I don't, I don't know if you can do this legally. You know, have, I I mean, having flexibility makes sense, but I I don't know that you can have the flexibility and get through town meeting and then keep the flexibility.
Well. So I. I think if the state is interested in getting these, this thing done? And I don't mean done with the parcel. They got to recognize that there are issues with towns with septic systems, it's not just, it's not just plug it into the pipe and you're good to go. So, uh.
Yeah.
We'll see. I, I.
Yeah.
It it was an interesting comment from a, you know, a party that I think is interested in this, I I I know they were interested. But I've just, you know, now you know what I know, basically.
Well, I hope that the subset of the whatever it is, hundred and fifty-five pounds is is enough of a septic component to it, that we can even get your attention, you know?
I don't know what the split is, but my guess would be a third, probably, I'm just, that's off the top of my head.
Ooh.
I don't know. I have no idea. You know? Well, you know.
Yeah, a lot of the towns have both, right, they'll have sewer and then they have septic, so I think as far as strictly septic, it's probably not all that many.
No, it's not in the eastern part of the state.
Yeah, yeah. So. Anyway, that as I said, that that came up late last week. Okay. We can move along? This is good. Good progress. There were no minutes. There was some correspondence you can run through if you wish, Sue, or or not.
Do you want me to share?
Sure, I mean, unless, you know.
I don't see any that was particularly relevant to us. They've got their hearing tomorrow.
But Newbury, right?
Oh, and they're getting to their tower too, wow, they're all over it.
A butter's notice for something on Plum Island.
Still building and combining on Plum Island.
Mining lots, yeah.
Full speed ahead. Get the sandbags.
Standing by now.
Like, really? Above ground level.
Yeah.
That's the key.
Good boy. Now this we'd like to see mixed-use, commercial residential.
Downtown Smart Growth Overlay District?
Yeah, Washington, that's, yeah.
Right along the water there, right?
Yeah.
Groveland for a motor vehicle repair shop.
It all sounds perfectly, as you would expect in all.
Right.
That's the end.
Okay, very good. Any administrative details, Sue?
Um, what, oh, yes, actually, there is, let me stop sharing. One thing that came up today, Drake's Landing would like to close out. I think we have done everything that we need to do with the exception of I don't think they've requested the, or we haven't given back the I think it's around three thousand dollars in their escrow account, but is there anything else that I'm missing that needs to be done for them to close out? They have the as-builds, they've.
I don't know, you're the keeper of the checklist, I have to say.
I, yeah, I think, let's, let's go back through and and let's see if they have any if they provided a list of any open issues that in fact are related to us, I know they certainly still have open issues, but things that are related to us. I doubt that there are.
According to our peer reviewer, there are not.
Okay, and has he, they've been paid, Meridian's been paid for everything?
Yes, in fact, I think their last was almost a year now.
Well, I'd say let's, let's bring this on, on, you know, with, well, we can make a motion at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll give you one, one other shot just to jiggle, jiggle the files and make sure we're, we're we're okay before we turn the money go over. This is money that goes back to Chip, right?
Yes.
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 Could check with Michelle? If there's anything that she's still tracking that would be our responsibility.
My understanding is that they've gotten everything closed from her.
But great.
Yeah.
Good, good. Not bad, okay. Um, anybody have anything else they want to discuss or problems? I I did send everybody a you know, my my thing about the flapping signs, so it's a the old Pearson's Garage there.
Oh, yeah.
They're they're not up for the, on the weekend, they take them in apparently, but they were back up today, so.
You know, Brian, I, I was thinking, if I just got one of those dancing air guys.
Yeah.
But but without, without any advertising purpose, without any text? Then it doesn't qualify as a sign, I figured I I could have like a twenty-foot one on my front yard.
Have a whole, you have twenty of them.
Twenty of them, yes, that's, that's good, it'd be, yeah, a rave at the, at Six Berry's Lane.
Dance party at Ray's.
Yeah, and you know, it's unfortunate, I mean, they're, they're, they're signs that advertise the fact that they're a state inspection station, they're lovely, they 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 couldn't have been cheap, they're, they're, look like they're well-done, but, you know.
Yeah.
Well, they're just temporary flags, though, they they go up and they go down, I used to use them for real estate, not as big as that, but. Real estate gets a separate sort of. Yeah, they are, state inspections is.
I mean, talk about changing the view coming down Main Street with the two big yellow things flapping there, it's.
They are.
It's not good.
Dear.
But Sam is back in the office next week and he said he'd look at it, so. We'll see. Okay, that's it for the, tonight, the month, and.
Move for adjourn.
Thank you all, move, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Breaker guy.
Zero. We wave goodbye. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Al.
Good night.
Take care. Take care.
Good night.